The meeting of the mayor and board of trustees of the village of Burr Ridge for Monday, August 11, 2025. I think I'd like to ask Mary Bradley to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
........................................................................... Thank you, Mary.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Francis?
Here.
Trustee Skiafa?
Here.
Trustee Pavezza?
Here.
Trustee Snyder?
Here.
Trustee Matal?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Mayor Grasso?
Here.
There are no presentations or public hearings tonight, but before we get to consent agenda, as the mayor's prerogative, I'd like to recognize Mary Bradley, who wants to come up and say a couple of words to the board. And she's got limited time. Don't mention what you're not going to mention.
I'm here tonight because on your consent agenda is approval of a contract to get the water mains and carriageway fixed. And I want to thank you in advance. I want you to pass it. And I want to thank you in advance. It's been a long time coming. I know the Water Committee has worked hard to get enough money so they can fund it. But I've been there for 25 years. Every house on my street has had two or three water main breaks. We are ready to have them fixed. So I want to thank you in advance. Pass it, please.
Thank you, Mary. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda. An item shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of anyone, trustee or anyone present at the meeting. Those items marked with an asterisk are considered to be on the consent agenda. A roll call shall be taken on the approval of the consent agenda and recorded in the minutes as an omnibus vote.
Oh, sorry.
If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be discussed by the board, open for public comment, and voted upon during this meeting. Five minutes. A, approval of regular board meeting of July 14, 2025. B, receive and file Plan Commission meeting of August 4, 2025. Six ordinances. Approval of an ordinance denying variation requests from Section 4I and 5F7 and 4J of the zoning ordinance to permit a sports court in the front yard of a property. A sports court within the minimum 30-foot yard setback for the R3 zoning district, a fence in the front yard, and a fence six feet in height. VO3 2025, 6500 South Elm Street, Rantay. B, approval of an ordinance amending Section 2211 of the municipal code of the village of Burr Ridge. Seven resolutions. C, approval of a resolution accepting a plat of dedication and plat of easement for public right-of-way and permanent easement from 15W070 Sedgley Road. And D, approval of a resolution regarding the need for confidentiality at closed session minutes. Eight considerations. A, approval to direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving a special use amendment in accordance with zoning ordinance Section 13L8 to amend the Forest Edge subdivision plan unit development ordinance, A834020121. Lower the minimum average lot size requirements. And two, amend the lot configuration of Phase Two in the Forest Edge subdivision. Z10 2025, 9140 Forest Edge Lane Duzo. B, approval to direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving text amendments to Section 6 and Section N14 of the zoning ordinance for community residences, Z05 2025, Village of Burr Ridge. C, approval to direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving text amendments to Appendix 5 of the zoning ordinance for disability terminology, Z09 2025, Village of Burr Ridge. D, approval of award of a contract for the 2025 Water Main Replacements Project to Trine Construction Corp. of St. Charles, Illinois, in the amount of $3,355,985. D, approval of the fiscal year '26 first quarter budget amendment. F, approval of an employment contract between the village and the International Union of Operating Engineers, 150 Public Works. G, approval of Mayor Grasso's nomination to appoint Deborah O'Donnell to the Economic Development Committee for a term expiring May 1, 2027. H, receive and file separation notice of Ryan Huzaric. I, approval of vendor list dated July 28, 2025, for the fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $906,815.51 for all funds, plus $252,960.13 for payroll period ending July 5, 2025, for a grand total of $1,159,775.64. And J, approval of vendor list dated August 11, 2025, for the fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $391,304.63 for all funds, plus $267,976,047 for payroll period ending July 19, 2025, for a grand total of $659,281.10. With that, can I get a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda? Five, A and B. Six, A and B. Seven, C and D. Eight, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion at the board level? Any public discussion, any public comment on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Six zero. The motion passes. Mayor, you can leave. All right, that takes us to resolutions. A, consideration of a resolution approving the disbursement of downtown business district funds to Topaz Cafe. Evan? Or trustee Skiafa?
Yeah, if you want to introduce, and then I can make some comments.
Sure.
So this is the board's part of the new EDC district funding policy. So as we're all aware, we have the downtown business district, which collects money on sales taxes and hotel stays. That money is then used to create economic development in the downtown area of Burr Ridge. It can't be used outside of the downtown. Generally, County Line to Bridewell, to the residential, to County Line Square, all that's the downtown. So as part of the EDC's policies regarding distribution of downtown business district funds, Bronco Palacuca, he owns Topaz Cafe, located at 780 Village Center Drive in the downtown business district, requested money to assist in offsetting approximately $40,000 in various mechanical and aesthetic improvements at Topaz, the restaurant. The EDC supported the request by a four-to-zero vote due to the impact of the entertainment district on Topaz Cafe, which is one of the primary road accesses to the restaurant. The EDC recommended that the board approve $24,000 to be dispersed with no additional conditions. The petitioner had already demonstrated that they had made and paid for these stated improvements at the property, which are included as backup in your packet tonight. And the attached resolution would codify their recommendation.
Thank you, Evan. So as chair is the Economic Development Committee, and we are the committee that oversees the business development district, and we are the committee that make the recommendation to the board. Topaz is our first, essentially, petition for a request for money out of the business district fund. Topaz is one of the first businesses, restaurants, that occupied the Village Center. They opened April 4, 2008, and they're a staple of our village. I know I've been there many times. As mayor, and I know everyone else has, Bronco does a fantastic job, and we just want to see him continue doing well. And so that's why he came and asked us for some help. The business has been suffering because of the new traffic pattern at the Village Center. And so I can see that, and I want to be sure that we participate in helping with him. And those are my comments, so I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody else have a comment? Yes, Joe?
We know the new traffic pattern did put like a 35%, 40% dent in that business. Individuals coming down that street can park on the street or roll in and out. Individuals are afraid. They got to make that long trek, so I commend Tony and his team for any kind of donation to assist like one of our staples in the district.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm highly in favor of this, not because I regularly go there, because I do regularly go there. It is a, one of our finest restaurants in Burr Ridge, and we have lots of good restaurants. Topaz is stellar, and Topaz has even longer history. They were there at the beginning of the Village Center, what, now over 15 years, Bronco? Seventeen and a half. See, time flies. And we're on what we consider to be the premier spot at the time for as lovely a project as closing down that road has become. And I went to the Ferrari thing, and I thought that was really beautifully done. I can see where it has now impeded the traffic flow over to that part and may have impacted Topaz, and does impact Topaz. There is also, and just so the public understands, this is a fund that has this money in it. It's not like we're taking money from somewhere else to do this. This is a fund specifically well-funded. This, we can write a check for this, and this is the reason why this fund exists. So I think it's appropriate time, it's an appropriate amount, and it's an appropriate purpose. I'm all in favor. Yes?
I think they supported the village, or they have been with the village for 17 years, so we should support them when they need help.
That says it even better. Yep. So, any public comment on this? All right, do I have a motion to approve the reso... I'm sorry? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for the disbursement of downtown business district funds to Topaz Cafe in the amount of?
$24,000.
$24,000? $24,000?
So moved.
I have a movement, a second. Any further discussion at the board level? Any public comment on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Six zero.
Six zero. Congratulations. Okay, motion passes. That takes us to 7B, consideration of a resolution authorizing the sale of certain surplus public real estate. Evan?
Thank you, Mayor. So as we've been discussing the future of Village Hall for the past few months, really longer than that, we're at a point where the math starting to get moving on this is coming down to begin to sell Village Hall. The board's given direction to at least theoretically continue to move forward with the idea of expanding the police department to create a larger Village Hall at 7700 County Line Road across the street to maintain the municipal campus. This resolution before you authorizes the sale of Village Hall as a property. It does not vote on the actual sale of Village Hall or its property. It only puts it up for sale. And so schematically, we only need a simple majority tonight, but to actually sell Village Hall, we'll need five of the seven elected officials to actually execute said sale. So the way the village attorney wrote the resolution before you tonight is that there is no set price affixed in the resolution. That doesn't mean there's no value to the land. It just means that the resolution's sole, really, emphasis on how to make a decision is the board will review all proposals that we'll bring back to you, and you make the decision based on what is appropriate. And you can use items such as price, use, impact on neighbors, conformity with the T1 district, all factors that you might normally see under a normal zoning petition, but then, of course, price will be part of that. We received an MAI appraisal, which is what state law requires. MAI appraisal says this is worth $1.8 million, and I'll just denote what we're actually talking about here. When we talk about Village Hall, I'm not talking about the entire section of the corner from the north property line all the way to the road. There are three parcels, in fact, at Village Hall, as you know it sits on, and we're selling two of them. The one that we will not sell, and I don't believe I would ever have direction to sell, is the one that the Veterans Memorial is sitting on. Now, the way this will work is we would put the blue outlined area up for sale, which is what you're looking at tonight, and then we would work with whoever eventually bought the property to work out access as well as shared parking down the road. Part of the design that we gave you last time was to contemplate some overflow parking in the evenings for Monday night meetings, such as board meetings and Plan Commission meetings at said site. Because of the way the T1 district is, we don't envision any, you know, late-night restaurants going in there or things like that. It'll be primarily an office setting that will close at dinnertime, and thus there'll be an empty parking lot that you'll see there most nights there. But again, the resolution before you sets a, sets no specific price other than the MAI appraisal. The MAI appraisal, again, is $1.8 million. We legally cannot sell it for less than 80% of that, which is about 1.4. But again, we've put $2 million into our budget for the Village Hall development. I'm confident that we'll likely get proposals to be above that. So I'll be using $2 million as my floor, unless directed otherwise by the board tonight, in terms of what I think is inbounds or out of bounds from a financial perspective. Uses will be relying on the T1 district, permitted uses, special uses, and the like. Very little is permitted in the T1. We're going to get a site plan hearing through the Plan Commission pretty much regardless what we see there. There are some very vague exceptions like churches and schools, but for the most part, we're probably going to see something in the medical office realm. Again, one more time, this does not execute as a sale of Village Hall. This merely allows the board to accept and consider proposals at a later date.
Any questions? Okay. So again, to be clear, this is only saying it's now up formally for sale. We're going to solicit its offers and bids.
We have to publish notice.
Then we have to publish notice, and I have an asking price in mind that, believe me, is well over $2 million, and I'm going to discuss that and have discussed it with Evan. And so you're going to see probably an asking price of basically $2,250,000. And we're confident that we're going to get some serious bidders at that price. And then, of course, it still comes back to a final vote here, or even interim steps. So tonight is just getting the train to move, and once it's moving, we can stop it, of course, or we can take it to the finish line by a vote of, as Evan indicated, five of the seven votes. I only vote in such a circumstance. So that's the fuller explanation. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
So I'm looking here at this diagram. I understand lots 37, 38, and 39. I see pins 023, 024, and 025. How does pin 024 fit in with lot 38? I'm confused. What's that red, red square there around 024?
The red is pins, and the blue are parcels related to a subdivision. So they're legally different. You can see, so 37 is this divided by that dotted line going all the way across.
So blue, so that 37 goes all the way to the yellow line?
Yeah, and then this is just a legal pin here that may have, there may have been something built there predating Village Hall, for all I know. But 37 and 38 are essentially the same size, so.
Okay, so playing devil's advocate, why couldn't we split lot 39 in such a way that one half of the parking would go with the Village Hall when it's sold?
You could.
Entice a buyer.
You could. I think from what we've heard from the market is that they're willing to just buy the land we're offering and then work on access through a development agreement.
Access agreement, easement agreement?
Yeah.
But we could still consider doing that.
Absolutely, 100%.
Consider anything that can legally be achieved.
Understood. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, and you?
Evan, what is the red square on the...
Right here?
Yeah, what is that?
This is pin, it just, it's a second pin that's a smaller pin. You can kind of see 23 is this kind of backwards rectangle here. This 24 is just this smaller pin right here.
Is it going to be sold, or?
Yes, 23 and 24 would be sold.
Three of them are going to be sold then.
Two of them.
Two of them. Two of them.
But the red square is within the two.
These two go, we keep this one.
For some reason, a pin was created long ago.
These are, these came from Robert Bartlett Estates, which is the original Burr Ridge subdivision 80 years ago. So these are old. That's why I'm suggesting there may have been a home there or a barn there, just something that required some legal separation. It never got cleaned up. I don't think it's affecting us today, but that's just where it sits.
But it would be within the two parcels that we're talking about selling. Okay? All right, so, yes?
So when I received the packet, this kind of caught me off guard. I'm still not on board, using analogy of trains. I feel as a trustee, if I, if I vote for approval of this, this tells the public that I'm in favor of moving that train down the line. And I, this afternoon, I quickly got on the phone, and I surveyed 10 residents. What's your opinion buying a new, you know, Village Hall or keeping the same one? Nine out of the 10 are against having a new Village Hall. Residents are not interested in spending money on a new Village Hall. One of them was undecided, but that was just a quick 10-person poll I did. I think we need to get more public comment before we start moving this train too far down the line.
Anybody else? Yes, Joe?
Well, when I polled my group of individuals, they were for it. Second of all, we are not making a decision this evening. We are putting it up, saying we're offering it for sale. When we're done, it's going to be political, it's going to go out there, and everyone's going to have their approach, and we have to go to a public, is my correct trustee or attorney? We have to put him in front of everyone for, goes through all of the motions, and all of our villagers can come front and talk to all of us, correct?
Well, it will come back to the Village Board to take a vote if you want to accept any proposal and actually enter into a contract to sell the property. So it has to come back. But I'm committed to holding a public hearing or two, if necessary. This, this item is not suddenly on the agenda. It's been talked about for months, and it's, actually, any long-term residents would know that it's been talked about for decades. So there's no surprise here, and we will have public hearings on this, and certainly anybody tonight or anybody in any future meeting can come and speak for or against this. Fiscally, it's something that's absolutely necessary, and I think we've looked at that upside. And of course, I would think that some residents might not want to spend money on a new building. But they don't work here, and they don't really know the facts, and if they do know the facts, I think they'll, they'll side with us. So I'm all for opening up forums so that everybody gets all the facts, and this is just going to get that train moving. And again, we can have hearings as we go along, and in fact, it should stay on the agenda until there's a vote to sell it, so that people can, can air their views on this. But tonight moves the ball forward, any analogy you want to make, but there'll be more downs and more, more plays to make. So I think we've got to move it along. This is not the time to stall this. Yes?
Currently, the village has no debt. So one of the big things that I'll be looking at when we do this is can we pay for it, or are we going to have to go in debt? Those are the things that's going to form my decision.
Okay, and that's a fair way to look at it, Al, and I think if you've heard Evan's presentation so far, we are contemplating bringing the project forward with a new building across the way, no debt.
I heard that, and I, if we can do that, but I just want, that's the way I feel about it.
Okay, well, sure, and you should feel that way about it. That's perfectly well to feel that way about it, and we will continue to make sure the numbers work. Anybody else?
I just want to add that I think staff's done a lot of due diligence, and they've shown us various scenarios, and money will need to be spent either way. Even if you have to redo this building, then you're just spending a lot of money, and you keep on fixing it. So it's better to just do, have a new Village Hall.
Yes, Tony?
I also talked to 10 of my friends, and their initial reaction was no. You should stay at Village Hall and not spend any money. But when I educated them about the costs of staying here versus moving into a new facility, they understood that moving to a new facility would probably be better for the village than staying in our current location.
And the novel thing about the village of Burr Ridge over the years, not just this board, but this board in particular, has been that they always ask the other question. Yes, we want to do this, how are we going to pay for it? Okay? And that's why the analysis has always been bang for buck, how much is it going to cost? And that's when you educate the public, and when they know, as Al just pointed out, that you can probably get a brand-new building, plus get premium price for this one, and build a brand-new building at no debt. That, to me, is the definition of fiscal responsibility. So let's continue to engage people. This is not the end of the discussion. It is the beginning of the discussion or the continuation of the discussion, but tonight makes, moves it forward, makes it serious for, for the plans, and it doesn't require anybody to vote for this when the real vote comes up. Okay? Yes?
I just want to give a quick financial update on the budget on that as well. So certainly, we want to continue to make the board aware of what they're talking about here. So this is an updated financing budget. Again, the budget last time was 5784 and change, so 58 is a round number. Working with director pricing, we were able to move around the capital fund a little bit and just find some additional money. Basically speaking, the new budget doesn't have any general fund spending at all. We're going to be able to pay for the entire project just with capital and Village Hall sale, as well as some of our risk fund money. Every dollar beyond $2 million, as you can see there, will correspondingly lower the impact on the general fund. The risk equity is a pretty fixed dollar amount. That's money we can put toward this. There's also a long-term budget there for the capital, for the general fund at the bottom. As you can see, if I didn't show you the stuff on the budget or on the item above, we'll be running surpluses in the general fund for the foreseeable future, and we'll be at or above 70% in balance to expenditures on our general fund. Our policy is 25%. Before, I thought we were going to have to spend a lot more money on the general fund. I don't think that's going to be necessary based on our trend in sales taxes and the like. The budget continues to be healthy, but I just wanted to bring the fresh information to the board at the earliest opportunity, just so you saw this and could think about it. Again, to be able to do this project with not even no debt, but no impact of the general fund at all, I think is a testament to our financial architecture, what we've all designed together.
Thank you, Evan. Anyone else? Yes?
Can you explain risk equity?
Risk equity is essentially our money that we have invested in third parties right now to do things like, if we have projects where we have issues with safety in a building, I would use that money to fix it. And so that's what that is. That's there to make sure that our risk management is put into place, that money can be spent on anything at all. But it has to be, generally speaking, related to projects that the board deems risk-appropriate. Because we have so many of these things, we've got a lot of those things there that need to be taken out of. Got about $1,005,000 in there right now, but that's money we can use on any real purpose.
Where is that bucket on the budget, in the budget?
The bucket's in the audit. It's, it's not a, it's not a money we keep on hand as far as a liquid account. It's, it's third-party invested.
Is that Irma?
Irma and IPBC, exactly. We've had the money for well below, well since I've got here. It's been there for 40 years, as long as we've been a member of Irma and IPBC.
Is this the, this is the fund we tapped into about 10 years ago to balance the road fund budget?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, I recall now. Thank you.
That's, that's good memory. Okay, so with that, and based on all that's said today, can I get a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the sale of the Village Hall?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion at the board level? Any public comment or any public questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Five zero.
Five one.
Five one.
Five one, I'm sorry.
Five one, motion passes. Thank you. That'll take us to public comment. Is there any public comment? There's no public comment. All right, reports and communications. Anita?
All right, well, summer is almost coming to an end. It's been a great summer.
The concerts were fabulous, and our community management analyst did a great job. As a grand finale, she managed to get the Great, the Great Navy Band, sorry, did I say that wrong? And, and it's going to play on August twenty-third at the Village Greens, and it should be a really nice band. So hope to see everyone there, Saturday, August twenty-third. It's not a Thursday as usual, so just, yeah, remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I just have a couple of points.
Just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bronco.
See you, Bronco, thank you. So I went to what I thought was going to be the last Village concert, but the Eagles tribute.
Yes, and then the Reckless played after that.
And then Reckless, and so I thought it was the last, but it was next to last.
There was a makeup one.
But there was a certain trustee having a fun time up front in a, in a perfectly rust-colored outfit, and she, she was having a good time.
Yes.
So glad to see it, and it was, that, that concert, that group was very well-received, so might consider that for next year, too.
Yes, yes.
But overall, I think the concerts were another big success.
Right, brought a lot of friends, too.
Yeah, so good, good for that. And then finally, I promised you a baseball note. So I have two sons that are involved in the Little League in Clarendon Hills, and they are not involved with the current team. They're, they have younger kids that are coming up next. But the Clarendon Hills Little League, the smallest village in the United States since nineteen seventy-two, won the championship for the regional games and is now in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, getting ready for their first game in the Little League World Series. There are ten teams from around the United States, ten divisions, and so they are one of the representatives from the ten divisions, and then there are ten internationals teams from the rest of the world. Twenty teams in Williamsport to play, and Clarendon Hills Little League is one of, is the team from the Gulf, the Lake State, or the regional Gulf States. But here's another thing. It was a double elimination. They lost to the Ohio team, eleven, nothing, in a slaughter rule game.
Wow.
And then two days later, came back to play them in the championship and beat them nine to four, and they were winning nine-oh going into the last, last inning. So, I mean, talk about the little engine they could, and they did. So congratulations to Clarendon Hills and Coach Harold, H-E-R-O-L-D, Brian Harold, who's the coach, and, and his assistants. Gosh, I, I know one was O'Malley, and I can't think of who the other one is, but great, great job, really prideful for this whole area that they're in, the Little League World Series. And they're on ESPN on two o'clock on Wednesday is the game, so. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, at six-thirty?
So moved.
Second. We have a movement, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.